Proud home of the University of North Dakota. This is the time and place for the JDA special meeting. This is the Grand Forks Growth Fund Jobs Development Authority, beginning with roll call.
Here.
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 Here. Wonderful. Thank you. Start with the action item 2.1, Amendments to Memorial Village Investments LLC Loan Request. Mr. Phelan.
President Weber and members of the Jobs Development Authority, we were last here on July 5th and you approved a loan and also the city council also approved the pilots who are here to provide some updates and I know you've asked me before the meeting, can I give us a quick overview of where we were on July 5th and where we are today and then our good colleague Dan Goss has been going over some particulars with you and I do see representatives of the developer, U N D and the U N D Alumni Association with this evening. Over the last month and a half or so, we've done a lot of, I think, good work on this project. I think it's a better project now. Highlight number one is the U N D Alumni Association has stepped up and they will be the group that's going to lead on the loan part in damage or particulars. U N D has provided a document and of course developers have provided some further assurance. So I think all three sides have done that. There's been a lot of conversations and probably thankfully on your part, you didn't have to be a part of a lot of the blow by blow of what's happened over the last month. I just want to highlight this project as you recall, the city has, as we always say, for a project to move forward, the city of Grand Forks needs to be the indispensable partner. Before in this case, we've done a lot of things that we normally don't do, but it's helped get this project to where it is today. As you're calling, you approved a 95% 20-year pilot payment loan tax. You've also were here to talk about the $2 million loan. That's a 20-year loan at 3%. So as you recall, you had a hybrid 2% for the first 10 years and then 4% for the second 10 years for an overall 3%. And start infrastructure investments. And so Dan will go over some of the infrastructure investments that we have committed and we're currently bidding. The sanitary sewer from Memorial Village 1, 2, and Wall Street Pollard Center. That's an approximately hopefully up to $900,000 investment that City of Grand Forks made. We didn't intend to, but we've added that to us. We're working on the stormwater pond and storm sewer. That's kind of a to be determined. And then of course, University Avenue, Second Avenue, North 3 construction. Those are 820 splits where the city needs 8% of that. All told, right now, we're plus or minus about $4 million of city infrastructure investment to help move forward with these various investments. We do have a donor has committed 20 million and that kind of completes the investment of the 4.5 million with our $2 million loan. We think tentatively that signing with the donor will occur this Friday at the U N D Alumni Association. So you should know that. It sounds like that's tracking here this week also. What we're receiving, this property is going to get on the tax roll and Dan will talk about this too. A mixed-use building and it's a 40-plus million dollar investment. I think we're estimating about $34 million in tax, in tax, property tax really. And obviously most of that's going to come on, you know, after 20 years. So we are going to get property that's on the property tax rolls on. We're going to gather redevelopment on the east side of campus. That is, it's going to equally match what's happened on the west side of campus. I think that's, that's big deal. It is new field project. I think really the big one for the community is we're going to have some community use in these U N D campus facilities. Not only the softball complex, but Dan will talk about the agreement. This is the big one. As you know, the last time on the, between the whole agenda will be to talk about our quality of life investors of turf and aquatics. But that agreement would also include the Pollard Athletic Complex, Memorial Village 1 track. And one thing that right now that's not, is not included in the turf facility is a track that is currently in the Pollard. That's going to be really important for us to get that agreement. To have that facility and as we can do with all as part of this. So I think that's a really valuable act that we have in this particular way. And as you said all along, Mr. Weber is that this continues our partnership with U N D, the Alumni Association and with these private sector developers. I think we're in better shape now than we were a month or so ago. It's not perfect, but we think it's perfectly imperfect. So with that, I'd ask Mr. Goss to go over the particulars and we are asking for his vote to move this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mr. Goss, please.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Goss.
Yes.
I think I need to ask permission to be recused or not be recused.
If you need a, looking for a motion. Based on my personal professional work with the U N D and the project, I'd just like to mirror the motion that was made last time where I refuse myself from this.
All right, I'm going to move to allow Mr. Cavani to vote with intention of voting down. For a second, we have a second motion from the mayor and a second from Slonsky. I need further questions or comments about the motion. Hearing them all in favor, signify by saying aye. I would be that you would, that you would have Mr. Cavani vote on this matter. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Aye.
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 Was defeated. Okay.
All right. Aye. Thank you. I'll just go through some of the general changes that have occurred since the July 5th agreement. One, Mr. Phelan already mentioned the Alumni Association is now a party to the pilot development agreement. We've also changed the substantial completion dates. They were, the original agreement, they were tied to both the softball field and the building being done at the same time. Or triggering certain events for both of those being done. We've made those independent, meaning that there is a substantial and final completion date for the building and a final completion date for the softball field. Also, there is section 2.2.1 of the agreement sets forth various components for the construction of the project. And there is now an exhibit that outlines, describes various infrastructure items that are left to build. The estimated costs, the estimated cost share and what would be picked up, balanced after city cost share by unit through special assessment, the developer paying for that. So that was changed to make that a little bit more clear for the parties. Also, some definitional things were changed because of the changes that resulted. For example, what I think we called the Memorial Village 2 promissory note. Now it's called softball field promissory note. Those type of changes that as a result, other changes that arose. I'll just go through the pilot. That's not really something that JDA approves. That was city council that, I think, for the presentation. First is softball field that after further review, it was determined that really is exempt. Under North Dakota Century Go 570208 subsection 16, it talks about facilities that are used by a nonprofit to promote athletic needs and use of a higher institution facility within North Dakota. There's now a representation from the Alumni Association that affects the purpose of their acquisition of the softball field parcel. So because of that, the softball field itself is exempt, that's the need pilot exemption. Also, there was, last week's city council meeting, there was a withdrawal of vacating the North 25th Street. That then changed the development agreement, section 3.3.3. That there isn't going to be the vacating of North 25th Street. However, there's going to be an agreement with the University of North Dakota and the city to allow for certain encroachments in that public roadway is also on Second Avenue North, some encroachments there. That agreement will also call for the university to maintain and construct that public roadway between, on North 25th Street, between university and Second Avenue. That agreement, just so you know, that agreement needs to be in place in order for the pilot to be effective and also for the loan to be made. So effectively, the university would take over the surface for the roadway and the sidewalks and maintain that for public use. The pilot itself really didn't change with respect to the conditions when it becomes effective. The building still has to be completed. The agreement I just talked about, about these encroachments has to be executed. The conditions for the softball field loan, which I'll talk about a bit, also have to be satisfied. And so those didn't really change with respect to when the pilot becomes effective. The most critical is obviously the building becomes completed. There's a certificate of occupancy issue there. The provision with respect to terminating the pilot also didn't really change. There are the statutory provisions stay the same. Those can be found in section 3.2.6 of the agreement. The one modification was the default provisions that allow for termination for a default. That was tied to those that default under the promissory note. That could have triggered the termination pilot. That was removed because the developer is no longer signing the promissory note. And so because of that factor, it has to be a default by the developer before we move to terminate pilot. Now with respect to the loan. I'll just kind of go through the where your apple was approved and what, what is being proposed tonight. First, promissory note was approved on July 5th was the note was to be made to the developer. They were to sign the promissory note. Now, as proposed, the Alumni Association will execute the promissory. On July 5th, you had approved guarantees being obtained from the owners of the developer that had a 10% interest period. That's not being proposed as the current lending transaction. Also, there is to be a mortgage on the land. That was approved, the field in the building, the dirt itself, where the softball field would be built, where the building would be built on. That was going to be provided by the Alumni Association and that is not being provided with the understanding that the softball field is really going to be transferred to the university in a very short period of time after it's done. And as I understand, the university cannot accept a property that is subject to a lien. There is, you would approve a leasehold mortgage. That really then becomes a lien on the building, the Memorial Village 2 building and assets within the building. That was approved. That's also being proposed with modifications. That, there was no change there. Also, you had approved a guarantee from the Alumni Association at that time. That became unnecessary when they became primary lender under the promissory. And then this dispersment of funds, that was approved on July 5th, where dispersment of funds would only be made under the note after both building and the softball field had been completed. The Alumni Association has indicated that they, they need the money sooner than that. So the dispersment of funds would be made once all the conditions are satisfied for making the loan. Other changes that were precipitated then because of what we just talked about. First is there is a provision in the development agreement that requires that the Alumni Association include within their lease the developer. They will be leasing the land to the developer to build the building. Within that lease, they have to, if they, if there happens to be a default by the developer. The, the provision that we require that is contained within that lease is that if that would happen, they terminate that lease with the developer, it does not affect our lien interest in the building. That has to be maintained so that, you know, if there's termination, like you said, if there's a termination of that lease, our JDA's lien interest still attaches to the building. If the lease termination wouldn't foreclose, we're going to make our lien interest. So that's, that will be contained in the lease agreement between the developer and the Alumni Association. I've had enough to review the lease and that will be included in their lease. Also, we are receiving a memorandum of understanding from between the university and the foundation, which requires that the lease payments that the Alumni Association uses the lease payments it's receiving from the developer to make the payments to the JDA. That if there aren't sufficient funds under those lease payments, the Alumni Association will use its unrestricted, restricted eligible and other assets to pay promissory note. Including funds that may otherwise have been transferred to the university. And if there are still insufficient funds, the university has agreed to, in good faith, take all necessary actions to secure funds to pay the loan. That's the terms in the memorandum of understanding. Those provisions with respect to payment of loan cannot be modified without the JDA's rate, without your consent. As far as the current funding, again, as soon as the, as long as the conditions for the loan are satisfied, funds will be dispersed to the Alumni Association inside the promissory note. In exchange for that, if the Memorial Village 2 building is not constructed by the date specified under the development agreement, that that can accelerate the note as well as if the softball field is not completed by the date specified in the development agreement, that can also accelerate the promissory. The conditions, they're spelled out in section 3.4. First one is that the Alumni Association has to certify that it has sufficient agreements, either the donor or other agreements, that with those agreements plus the $2 million, that they have enough money to complete softball field. They are also, in that provision, it also calls for the Alumni Association to effectively cash flow the construction with their own unrestricted assets while those agreements are fulfilled over the course of a year and a half, two-year period of time. I'm not sure how long it will be under those agreements. The landlais provision I just talked about, protecting the JDA's interest in the building if the landlais itself is terminated. That has to be part of the lease agreement. I've already started, starting that process. That the JDA gets a title commitment or title representation that it's at least a second position to the bill. We expected that we'd be in a second position because the primary lender would be, would require a first position. The primary lender in the documents is not to exceed $35 million as where we'd be in second position. We have the MOU executed by the Alumni Association and U N D. The loan documents are signed. Also, that property is replanted and that encroachment agreement we talked about as far as 25th Street is also mentioned too. This is what Mr. Phelan referred to. There's provision that that the university commits to continuing in discussions until it reaches a final agreement for the use of softball field, Pollard facility and the track facility. It is also part of the conditions for the loan. And then no default and that the representations that are made by the Alumni Association, the developer, are accurate as time goes. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any, any questions or comments? On my, Mr. Phelan.
Yeah, just one question on this then. In the end, is it almost like we have two different agreements? One with the softball field and the other for the mixed use? Do they have? Or they have to be combined under the same, on a single agreement?
We have a single agreement, but there really truly are two components to it. The development agreement speaks to both the pilot provision and also the softball field, the loan. Also, because of the fact that the JDA is providing $2 million of loan money to build something, some of the terms and conditions with respect to the construction would have people at locations for both softball field. I wanted to make sure that as lender that those type of standards are being met. And so you, I suppose you could have divided into two separate agreements, but you'd have essentially the same provisions, except one would have the pilot provision. And the other one would have the loan provision, but all the other reasons, the agreements would mirror each other. So it just seemed, keeping one agreement made sense.
Anything further, Mr. Phelan?
No, nothing. That's it.
Thanks, Ken. Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
So they, Dan, your office and Alumni Association, developers, U N D, all the legal teams just took obviously a lot of work to come together and grow. It's an exciting project and we're all looking forward to the day we can go watch a game there and forget about all the work it took to get there. With that, I'm going to motion for approval.
We have a motion and a second. As a technical matter, we're, we have some folks listening tonight, but even with Mr. Cavani recused, we still have a quorum for the spoke. I've noted that the, the recommendation, the staff recommendation for JDA and for the special council meeting is the same. Although it's been my understanding all along that the infrastructure and the pilot are really the realm of the city council and that this loan is specific to JDA. For matters of expedition, we're, we're combining for both bodies to weigh in on the whole package. Is that correct?
Correct, because there were changes both to some of the provisions that affect pilot and some of the provisions that affect the loan. And the pilot really is in the venue of the city councils. They need to approve those type of items. For example, that, that public infrastructure, things like that. This, your vote could really be directed toward the terms of development agree with that affecting the loan.
Chairman Weber, I don't know if you do, have a public hearing on that.
Thanks. Let me open the public hearing on item, on this item. Does anyone wish to speak to this item? Hearing that, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Phelan.
If I could reiterate what Mayor Wachowski said and think that caused it. He did a whole lot of work and not only did he great, great work, skillfully. He's the one who created all these original documents for everyone to criticize and provide pushback. So without Dan creating the original, we wouldn't be here. So we should all be very thankful that Dan's on our team and really took the brunt of the authorship of this. We wouldn't be here today in front of you without Dan Goss. So thanks to Mayor Wachowski for appointing him, you confirming him because thank goodness he was on our team.
I've spoken in the past in favor of the infrastructure development. That's part of our responsibilities, the city. The pilot is a traditional tool that we use for helping deals like this get across the finish line. Mr. Goss said extraordinary work beyond the ordinary on putting together this loan deal. Is, is there anyone from the Alumni Foundation that wishes to speak on this this evening? In the meeting? Not seeing anyone. With that, we have a motion on the floor. Any further questions or comments? Hearing them all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
We have a position.
I oppose.
From Mrs. Housky. Very good. So that's a 4-1 vote in favor. Is that correct? I counted that correctly? 5-1. And with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion from the mayor.
My second.
Okay. It was second for Ms. Lunskey. She beat you to it. Mrs. Housky, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thanks. I'll keep moving here. This is welcome everybody to the City of Grand Forks Special City Council Meeting on August 14th. We're going to go through basically the same thing, but why don't we start with the roll call, please?
Wyman.
Here.
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 Sandy.
Jean.
Here.
All right, Mr. Phelan, we just got two action items and we have only the other one. So please.
I think we've only briefed that. I would just ask Dan if you wanted to give a quick overview, but we're looking for a similar positive vote on this as part of the city council.
Are we go through the same? Yeah. So you want a motion to be refused this night? So I'll move that Mr. Cavani be allowed to vote on this item. We have a second. We've got a motion from Mr. Weber, obviously, and a second from Ms. Lunskey, obviously with intention to refuse Mr. Cavani. So all those in favor signify. And again, this would be an aye vote if you wish for him to vote. If you want to be recused, it would be a vote negative. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Aye.
Aye.
That motion has been refused. We have a vote on that, Mr. Cavani.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. I guess I'll just incorporate my reference, my present, prior presentation during the JDA. I don't really have anything more to add. I think I went through pilot. It really didn't change other than to remove the softball field, which it needed to. And candidly, there probably wasn't much to the pilot for the softball field anyways, because it only deals with buildings that qualify.
All right, so the promotion approved, staff recommendation on the matter.
More approval.
Got a motion approved from Mr. Wyman, second from Ms. Lunskey. A little backup. Any further discussion on the item?
What are we voting on?
If you want to clarify one more time, basically, Ms. Housky, it's essentially the same thing. There's just items from both of the, why don't you go ahead and ask?
Thank you. The, the, there were some changes, modest changes with respect to the pilot or the development agreement and because the city council, the city of Grand Forks is a party to the agreement as well as the JDA because of their role in, in the loan, became necessary for both bodies to approve the development agreement as modified.
So it's just a double vote, like the same thing that we just voted on, right?
Correct. The first vote, you were serving your capacity as member of the JDA. Now you're serving as a council member.
All right. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Again, it was 5 to 1 and 4 to 1, 1 to 7 vote. I believe that's the only item on the special city council meeting. Is that correct? A motion, a motion, Mr. Weber, second from Ms. Lunskey. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Now we are adjourned. Very good. And, and this is the time and place for the Grand Forks City Council Committee of the whole. We'll begin, once again, with roll call, please.
Wyman's here.
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 So we still have a forum. We'll start off with item 2.1, project number 8602, 2023 River Dam Inspection Information.
Good evening, Chairman Weber and members of the committee. What you have before you is a information item regarding our annual inspection of the Riverside Dam. This dam was originally constructed, or the original dam was constructed back in 1925 to address the water flows and making sure that the city had an adequate supply of water for its citizens. This dam was reconstructed in 1988, 1989 into a concrete structure. And it's approximately 13 feet tall and it's a weir structure with the weir being 278 feet long in total with the dam being 320 feet long. Annually, we end up doing this inspection just to make sure everything's still looking all right. All the rip rap is still in place. We're not having secondary damming because of large trees that have been moved along by floodwaters. So we do a visual inspection of the dam when the water's low enough. And besides some minor maintenance items like spraying down weeds, making sure we don't have any, any vegetation within our rip rap, everything seems to be a-okay. This is informational. We, if you have any questions, they're more than I can answer.
Just good news at this time. Wonderful. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Item 3.2, no, item 3.1, Youth Hockey Association Welcome Events, September 20th, 2023. Looking for noise variance? Yes, please.
Good evening. This is a new event this year and it's a actual
Good evening. This is a new event this year, and it's an actual welcome event for Grand Forks Youth Hockey. They are going to be using a grassy area next to Icon Arena, and they plan on having alcohol served, and the van, and sponsors, and possible new sponsors, and all that good stuff. Both of their letters are in the actual packet, and Nathan Rappaguard is the alcohol manager, who will be providing from Simp and the alcohol.
Any questions or comments? Yes, please.
I saw in the application, it said that they would have two off-duty officers, I just think it should be changed to two officers, because they're not off-duty, two overtime officers. Okay.
Move approval, we have a motion for Mr. Kavami, second from Ms. Lunskey. Any further questions or comments? Hearing then, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion passes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item three point two, approved change in ownership for the other half of Coffee and Tap House LLC, and associated change of the name to Ford Room LLC, doing business as the board.
Good evening. Chair Weber and members of the committee, we have a request from a stand-alone who was previously granted a liquor license in a LLC with Catherine Gunderson, it was named the other half, Coffee and Tap House. That was back in twenty twenty one. Ms. Gunderson has decided that she wants to leave the business, and as they were fifty fifty owners, our city code requires any ownership change in an alcohol license of fifty percent or more is approved by city councils, so they are asking for that approval tonight. That would qualify as one of the exceptions in city code where we could not impose a fee. And along with making a clean break and a fresh start as an independent owner of the LLC, she would like to change the name and create the new LLC board room, which is in progress with the Secretary of State's office.
Thank you, Ms. Lunskey. Any questions or comments? We have a motion and a second, motion for Mr. Vian, second from Ms. Lunskey. Further questions or comments? Hearing then, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Item three point three, and can we take these all in one single motion? So these are committee commission appointments and reappointments to the Events Center Commission, the Airport Authority Board, and the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, Mr. Fionn?
Yes. Council Vice President Weber, the mayor has made three appointments here, two are reappointments and one's a new appointment. So the first one at the Alert Center, we are going to have three Alert Center commissioners rotating off between now and the end of the year. And so we do have one position that's open, you know, and so we did advertise. Mayor Boczewski is recommending Mr. Scott Floyd, he is the CFO at Acme, which is obviously an important corporate entity we have in Grand Forks, and so he's interested in stepping up into a position, and I think will serve quite well for us, and his information is there for your review, and so we're asking for him to be appointed for his first term. And while one coming off, and you should anticipate two more additional commissioners to be reappointed, so we're going to continue to advertise, but there are some people in the queue that you think would be would enjoy and be of a lot of value to the Alert Commission, please have them go to our website and submit their names, because there's two really good opportunities to serve the city of Grand Forks.
And I suggested that we could take all three of these at once, but should we have an individual vote on each? We can do all of them, all right, go on to the next.
The next one is a reappointment, and this is to the Airport Authority, and you have a, you have an email in there from Mr. Reese, our Airport Executive Director, and that's to reappoint Mr. Dean Stevenson. Mayor did interview Mr. Stevenson, and has decided in court in reappointment process, so that's recommendation to have him reappointed to another term.
And the housing authority.
Again, this is another reappointment, and Ms. Joan Johnson has been on there for quite some time, and Mr. Weber, you have also served, continue to serve well there too, so it has a request to have her reappointed, and she's done a very good job for a significant amount of time, and is very dedicated to the mission of that, so that's the final one.
Very good. Questions or comments on any of these reappointments? Mr. Kavami, move, have a motion, and a second from Ms. Lunskey. Further questions or comments on the motion? Hearing then, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion passes. Three point four, C D B G five-year consolidated plan update.
Good evening. The city's five-year plan for our C D B G program expires next year, so this request is to authorize issuing the R F P that's attached to your staff report to find a consultant to help us with the update that we have budgeted forty five thousand dollars for this in our twenty twenty three added budget. It does seem a little early, but we do have money in our added budget this year, thanks to the sale of the Corporate Center, so we are asking to get it issued soon. The timeline would be advertised as soon as council authorizes it, have the proposals due at the end of September, then our community advisory committee would review them and bring back a recommendation to city councils, so that action on that could be taken in October with the idea of making sure that that consultant contract is signed this year, so that we meet those on C D B G added requirements. So again, the request is to authorize us to issue that R F P.
Thank you, Ms. Lunskey. Looking for a motion, and this is standard, we have to do this every time.
Every five years, yes.
Move, motion, and a second from Ms. Lunskey. Questions or comments? Hearing then, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion passes. Moving on to item three point five, award bid for the twenty twenty three dash eleven parking ramp cameras and wiring upgrade.
Good evening. Bring aboard the award for the parking ramps, we have budgeted a hundred and sixty thousand. Parking fund currently for the needed upgrades, you both made a report at four hundred and forty eight thousand fifty seven dollars. And you also have our consultant online, who's helping us interstate parking, manage the ramps, if there's any specific question about the bit, with that, looking for the award of the most.
Thank you, Ms. Lunskey.
I don't have a question. Do I need to recuse myself for this?
Make a motion to recuse Ms. Lunskey from this, or to include Ms. Lunskey. Looking for a second.
I'll second.
We have a second for Mr. Vian. All those in favor, which would mean that Ms. Lunskey would be allowed to vote, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
So motion's defeated, recused, and now looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion for Mr. Vian, second, second for Mr. Kavami. Further questions or comments on the motion? Hearing then, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Lunskey. Item three point six, plans and specs for project number eight six oh four, South Forty Eighth Street Shared Use Path from Seventeenth to Thirty Second Avenue South.
Good evening. Plans ahead of, in front of you this evening are for converting the existing gravel path that is along South Forty Eighth Street from Thirty Second Avenue to Seventeenth Avenue South. This is a continuation of the shared use path that we did last year, along Thirty Second Avenue, just west of Portland Drive. This is getting pavement, paved trail to the industrial park, kind of in that area, so it's one more leg, it's the next piece. And this is going to be the last of the gravel in this area as well. We did receive federal funding through the Transportation Alternatives Program for this project, which covers eighty percent of the construction costs, all the design engineering and construction engineering have to be handled by the local entity or through a consultant. We've completed these plans using city staff, which saved us a little bit of funds in that regard. Right now, the estimate for this project is just under seven hundred and thirty thousand, with our city share being approximately two hundred and thirty thousand, and that's assuming a hundred percent city share on construction engineering costs. Because this is a D O T bid letting, we are looking at a February bid opening, so we're still quite a ways out, but that is the soonest bid opening that we could get for this project. And with that, staff is recommending approval of plans and specifications.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Questions or comments or a motion, please? Mr. Vian? Was that a second or a question?
Second.
And then, any comments or question after your second? Hearing no questions or comments, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion passes, thank you again. Item three point seven, award Public Works bids for A, bid to twenty twenty three seven Rock Road Salt for Ice Control, bid twenty twenty three dash eight, Wash Sand for Ice Control, bid twenty twenty three dash nine, contingent snow removal and spring cleanup services for the twenty twenty three, twenty four season, and D bid twenty twenty three dash ten, street marking paint for twenty twenty four season, Ms. Lunskey.
Good evening, Vice President Weber, and Councilmembers. The first thing I need to do is correct the staff report for the twenty twenty three dash seven. I inadvertently left in the twenty twenty two bid amounts in the body of the staff report, everything else is correct. So there was two bids for the Rock Salt. Compass Materials of America did not meet the bid specifications, so we are requesting to award the bid to N S C Minerals of Saskatoon, Saskatchewan, for one thirty three thirty six.
Questions or comments from Ms. Lunskey? Move, we have a motion, and a second, any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing then, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion passes, thank you. Item three point eight, approved purchase of replacement stormwater vehicle. I, I apologize. I thought that we were taking all four of those bids as a single motion, we need to go through and approve them one by one.
Do you want me to go through all of them?
Yeah.
Take it away. Wash Sand for Ice Control.
White Wash Sand, we received two bids, one from Strata Corporation for nineteen ninety five at the time, and the other one from Down Construction for twenty four seventy five at the time.
Move, motion in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion passes. Item C, the contingent snow removal and spring cleanup services.
Received one bid from Down Construction, the amount of ninety thousand dollars.
Looking for a motion, move, approval? Motion in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion passes, and three point seven D, the street marking paint for the twenty twenty four season.
Received two bids, one from Diamond Local for fifty five thousand forty dollars, and one from Sherwin-Williams for sixty nine thousand eighty eight dollars, with low bid being Diamond Local.
Move, have a motion in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion passes. Thanks for the great paint jobs out there, like the cycle icons on North Coast. Item three point eight, approved purchase of replacement stormwater vehicle.
Whoever, members of the committee, I'm here tonight looking for approval of replacement vehicle for the Stormwater Department. Back in July, one of our vehicles was damaged beyond repair, a traffic accident. No one was injured, city driver was not at fault, the other driver admitted fault, so city did accept insurance payment, thirty seven thousand one hundred and twenty one dollars for the damage. We requested quotes for a three-quarter ton truck, we requested local, and we also used an online purchasing site called Sourcewell. We, we, we're, sorry, we received three quotes. The lowest quote was a Ford F two fifty from National Auto Fleet, which is a Sourcewell company, they essentially run fleet bids for municipalities, and you, they provide you with the price, and that's the lowest price they can offer. The price of that vehicle was fifty one thousand one hundred and twelve dollars and eight cents. The remaining funding for this purchase will come from the stormwater cash, so just asking you to approve the purchase of twenty twenty four Ford F two fifty from National Auto Fleet, in the amount of fifty one thousand dollars, fifty one thousand one hundred and twelve dollars eight cents.
Very good, thank you, thank you, Mr. Lunskey. Any questions, for a motion? A motion from Ms. Lunskey, second, second from Mr. Kavami, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion passes, thank you, Mr. Lunskey. Item three point nine, environmental document for project number eight one six four, Forty Seventh Avenue South interchange.
Mr. brass, okay, thank you. Chairman Weber, members of the committee, we're here to talk about a project which is to solve the traffic problem on Thirty Second Avenue South, which, based on previous studies from the M P O, translates into an interchange project on Forty Seventh Avenue South. This project's been talked about for a number of years on the, on the city level, and thank you, the M P O did a study about six or seven years ago, which really started showing the impacts of the lack of available alternatives on Thirty Second Avenue South. Again, their preliminary data showed the best alternative would be to look at interchange on Forty Seventh Avenue South. Based on that, they actually, the North put a D O T started getting interested in, hey, maybe we need to start looking at this. At that point in time, I think the city council, we made the first strategically good decision on, on what to do with that, and that was to say, you know what, in order to expedite this thing and keep the D O T interested, let's do a fifty percent cost share on doing the environmental document. In bureaucratic terms, that almost immediately brought D O T to the table, partnered with us, and said, let's get going on this document. So the D O T then went out, through their processes, they went out and selected all take engineering to do the environmental analysis, it's a very rigorous, very detailed long process. We've been working on this thing, I think, for a couple of years now, getting through all that. What you're going to see tonight is really just the tip of the iceberg, it's all the moving parts that go on behind the scenes. So with that, all takes started looking at refining some of the other alternatives that would be associated directly with an interchange on Forty Seventh Avenue South. There's alternatives that keep it right on alignment, there's some that have a shift with some early indications, the federal highway might want to have a little, a little more spacing. You'll see that that alternative kind of starts to go away tonight. Anyway, they started developing those alternatives, along with that is a decision about how close can the next intersections be on Forty Seventh Avenue South itself. At that point, I think we made another good strategic decision, the mayor did. The mayor led a contingent of staff, including Todd Fionn down to Bismarck to meet with, they called an executive meeting with all the upper level staff at the D O T, that's been what, a year, year and a half ago already? But I think that was really instrumental in demonstrating to the D O T the importance of the project to the community, and also the need for you know, what's going to be efficient connections for us at the city level. That'll make more sense as, as we get into the, talk about it. By the way, all take engineer, and specifically the representative, representative tonight is Mike, Mike Cuffington, went through that, the rest of that process of developing all those different alternatives. And we're at a point tonight, now that we're ready to make some decisions, that's the next piece in the process, city making a decision on, on the, on the alternatives. And letting the cat out of the bag, if you're looking at the city staff recommendation, we're looking at, at a project that's on alignment on Forty Seventh Avenue South. It's alternative B one point one, when you're going through your program, there, there's a lot of other little iterations in there about configurations and this and that and the other. Quite frankly, I, I think they're relatively, I don't want to say irrelevant to us, but what, what, what we're going to do tonight is, is Mike's going to give you a very executive summary of the process, so we're not going to drag you through all the minutia detail of all these different alternatives and, and the definitions thereof, we're going to try to give you these the basic information that you need for the decision. So that's decision number one, is going to be the actual location of the interchange, that's, that's B one one. The second decision is we want to make it, recommend that we meet the D O T's minimum spacing recommended allowances for the next connecting intersection on Forty Seventh Avenue South. That's a quarter mile. Optimum spacing from the D O T's perspective would be a half a mile. Half a mile for us would mean that the first full intersection would be like Thirty Fourth Street on the east side, all the way over to Thirty Eighth Street on the west side. That just doesn't work for us, and it doesn't work traffic-wise, it was rigorous traffic analysis, when you, you push that much connecting traffic into that kind of an intersection, you really just have a mess. So what we're recommending to, tonight, will be to go with a minimum spacing, which means we can put our first connecting intersection on Thirty Eighth Street for that on the east side, and forty And Forty-second Street on the west side. That optimizes things for us relative to our future growth and development. By and keeps, again, our local system operating at at a high level service. So with that, kind of letting the cat out of the bag, first first person up here will be Mike Mike Cuffington. He's going to go through what I I call the the executive summary. Then Dave Carrico will come up and do kind of a wrap up after that, and that will be available for any kind of questions that may ask.
Excellent. Good evening, will.
Thank you. The next slide. And one more, please, all right. I'll just hit on the background, so I won't belabor this, but the twenty seventeen study along I twenty-nine. Commissioned by the Grand Forks East Grand Forks M P O, identified issues of Thirty-second Avenue. Looked at a number of potential solutions, really came to the conclusion that. A new interchange to the south Thirty-second Avenue is really the only viable option for addressing those traffic concerns. And one important thing to know and all that, but we're talking about the congestion on Thirty-second, it's not just Thirty-second Avenue, it's also. The interchange ramps themselves, and as we start getting to that twenty forty traffic volumes, you actually see spill back onto the interstate main line, which obviously has a lot of safety problems associated with it. Excellent. And one more, please. So when we undertook this study, we, first thing we did was go back and kind of reconfirm some of those assumptions from that original study, looking at the traffic. The primary takeaway here, if you look at the red circle in the middle, red circles represent the whole service app, which is failing movements, so. By twenty fifty, all the intersections along Thirty-second Avenue, near the Thirty-second Avenue interchange are predicted to be failing. Not providing any service. Excellent. So kind of looking at this over time here to kind of see what we can expect. To really get into some of those deficient traffic operations, the solid black line. That represents the overall level of service for Thirty-second Avenue and then the dotted lines going up our individual intersections. So you can see by twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, we start already have deficient operations at Thirty-eighth Street, Forty-eighth Street, Forty-second Street. And really not too far off in the the future here by twenty twenty-three, or twenty thirty-two, twenty thirty-three. We already start to see deficient operations across the system as well. Next slide. I'll mention, looked at some of those other alternatives that could potentially address those traffic concerns. Everything we looked at, list there, what had no effect in mitigating congestion at Thirty-second. Which included overpasses seventeen, additional lanes on Thirty-second Avenue. An overpass and not an interchange, which is an overpass at Forty-seventh. We also looked at Merrickville interchange on the river crossing, and none of those did anything to what we gave the issues at Thirty-second. We also looked at shifting further to the south down to Sixty-second Avenue. That did have some marginal benefits at Thirty-second, but not the same level that an interchange at Forty-seventh would provide, and also did not. Fit well with the the growth plan for Grand Forks. Excellent. So the the area I'm in red there, that's what we landed on for our study area. And one important thing to note, the minimum spacing for Fed Highway regulations between interchanges is one mile, so. Forty-seventh would be right at that minimum one mile spacing. So we looked at on alignment, that's also the reason why we looked at shifted further to the south alternatives to kind of alleviate any concerns from that highway. Next slide. And one more. So what we, after going through all the ever and putting developing alternatives. What we landed on were these eight alternatives listed here. They kind of broken up into two, four alternative groupings at a high level, so on alignment, for on alignment alternatives, and then shifted alignment, which would be shifted a quarter mile to the south. And then. Each of these alternatives also had a subaltern, as you see, B one point one being signals and loops without the ability to accommodate a collector distributor, and then. B one point two, same alternative, but with the ability to accommodate a collector distributor. Yes, and some people don't know what a collector distributor is, but. At a high level, it would be an additional roadway that would be constructed adjacent to the interstate where. Say you wanted to get off at Thirty-second, if a collective distributor was put in, you'd actually get off prior to Forty-seventh, if you had a Forty-seventh Avenue interchange. And then it basically takes all the merging movements for any of the interchanges that would be on this system. And moves them to to a separate lane to avoid all those merging movements. It does provide better overall level of service from an interstate, really typically only see them in very large urban areas. It was thrown out there, the D O T, and maybe one more thing to note, is that. When we say collector distributor for these, it would just be the ability to accommodate that system in the future, which essentially means. Pushing out an additional seventy feet, widening the the bridges, an additional seventy feet on each side, so that. In the future, if the traffic volumes dictated it, it would allow for installation of a collector distributor. So the cost to just accommodate it is about four million dollars on average of extra cost. But you will see that the staff recommendation is to be one point one, so that would be not accommodated collector distributor, and that's also what the voting thus far with the D O T. Has shaken up to these, so. Keeping those alternatives on the table, but right now, it doesn't seem like anybody's really in favor of it. So then, the the signals and loops is kind of your classic interchange configuration, so you see that B one point one as well as the C one point one, that's the same. Interchange configuration, just once on alignment, once shifted. Going back to the on alignments. The second alternative for on alignment from an interchange configuration standpoint would be a modified single point urban interchange or modified split. I don't know if anybody's been on Cheyenne Street since it's got reconstructed in Fargo, but that interchange there is the same interchange configuration where. Funnels all the signal movements to the center of the interchange. It operates very well, but. The traffic blind that we have here was kind of negligible benefits and quite a bit higher price tag. And then looking at the shifted. Alternatives, the the second alternative we looked at was the roundabouts with loops, so instead of having signalized interchange or intersections at the ramp. The interchange would function with roundabouts for signals. And then, one final, very important thing to note is that all the on alignment options. Since we were at that minimum one mile spacing. They all contain, what we call an auxiliary lamp, but basically, instead of your typical merging movement, where if you were. Getting on at Forty-second, heading north towards Thirty-second, instead of that on ramp merging into main line traffic. It would just basically be a three line, three lane section between Forty-seventh and Thirty-second, where that would just continue. Transition rate to the off ramp of Thirty-seventh Avenue. That makes sense, so. Lot thrown out there, does anybody have any questions about the alternative? Yeah. Can go to the next slide. Talk about a couple of the impacts, Grand Forks campground is right at Forty-seven. Regardless if we are looking at a shifted or an on alignment, that campground would be impacted and would require relocation or complete acquisition of that campground. We have had discussions with the owner of that campground, he's indicated an openness to selling, so. It is a private for-profit business, so. Some of the the regulations that would come into play. Placing additional protections on the table for that property. Next slide. There's also a transmission line in Coeur d'Alene Power has a three fifteen K B. Line that crosses right at around Forty-seventh there. As you can see, it would be impacted regardless, the on alignment would have some additional pole impacts requiring a little more of a relocation. We have been in contact with the Coeur d'Alene Power, and either way, it doesn't sound like it would be a big issue on their end. Next slide. So the access requirements, that's what I was talking about that quarter and that half mile, so. If you look on the right side of the screen, this is taken directly from the D O T's design manual. You've got the interchange wraps, and then what they allow for different spacing distances to the first intersection. So you've got your your right in, right out with seven hundred fifty, you've got directional median, and then a full. Singleized or full access interchange, and so what we're talking about is that full access one. The D O T minimum is a quarter mile, the desired is a half mile. This is recent changes to the design manual, I will say, I don't think there's any. Any of the current intersections associated, your interchanges in Grand Forks meet that minimum distance, so even at the minimum, it would still be. A greater spacing than anything that's out there currently. Next slide, please. You can see how this lays out, so. More or less, if we're talking about the east side of the interchange, quarter mile would allow for full access. At Thirty-eighth Street, whereas it went to the half mile, it would first full access, you'd have Thirty-fourth. Next slide. Looking at the pros and cons of those access considerations, really other than. The meeting the desired spacing distance, the minimum access spacing has better traffic operations. A lower potential to redistribute traffic on I twenty-nine. Better safety from a pet bike, as well as a safety standpoint, you know, Thirty-fourth runs right by the elementary, so there's. Pet bike as well as safety benefits at being at Thirty-eighth as that first pole versus Thirty-fourth. Next slide. And one more. So going back to the alternatives, the the primary alternatives, just looking at right away, cost and level of service. So that alternative B one point one, the very top one, that's the staff recommendation. It really is the best balance of right away needs, cost and level of service, so. That level of service, B, that really results because of that auxiliary lane, so. Even if we shift to the south, in fact, the that we have that auxiliary lane with the on alignment alternatives actually results in better traffic operations on main line I twenty-nine versus shifting further to the south and providing the additional. Next slide, please. So this is a summary of the voting table from the D O T so far, so we submitted the environmental document. Part of that environmental document, as it goes to reviews by the different divisions within the North Quiddity D O T. They provided all their votes, so the one outstanding vote right now is going to be the the city Grand Forks vote there. So as you can see, the the staff recommendation is in green there, and it aligns. With what the current voting has shaken out at the D O T level. But that does not do.
Thank you, Mike. Next slide, please. So now we're going to be looking at the actions that we need to take tonight to see. Be in the hole. We have before you the decision document, which the staff recommendation board is the alternative B one point one, which is on alignment with signals. And not being able to accommodate that collecting distributor system, so it's going to be that narrower bridge rather than a wider bridge. And as Mr. Hobbie mentioned earlier, that that's going to save us a little bit of funding as well. The staff is also recommending the minimum spacing for that first full intersection, that way then we can have a full intersection at Thirty-eighth, and a full intersection at Forty-second. That's going to end up helping on your traffic operations, it's going to keep traffic away from discovery of entry school by having that full access at Thirty-eighth. And it's also going to still exceed all the current interchange spacing that we have throughout Grand Forks here. As a staff, we are open to accommodating that collector distributor system if it is something that is desired by the D O T and federal highway. But at right, at this point right now, staff is recommending that it be one one instead of the B two. Next slide, please. So next steps that we're looking at, kind of moving forward, is maybe the whole vote this evening, city council vote, and then. D O T programming a project into the state transportation improvement program. That will allow consultant to finalize the environmental document, and then complete interchange justification order on I J R. After all that has been completed, we can then move into that final design. Start putting meat on bones and figure out the final designs, the the intricate details. That way then, we can figure out what we need for roadways connections, what we need for right away acquisitions, and what we need to do for those utility relocates. As Mr. Hobbie had mentioned earlier this evening, there is that that transmission line that goes over the interstate that was like them to be relocated. There's possibilities of other utilities that we may need to take care of as well. And then eventually, we'll be looking to. Secure funding to construct the interchange itself. Along with that, staff is recommending. Approving the project concept reports, or project concepts as included in this report, pretty much saying that we've left no stone unturned. Recommending the selection of alternative B one point one, and also selecting the minimum distance for the interchange or the intersection spacing, yes, the spacing. With that, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks. Any questions or comments from? The members. How soon can we expect construction?
Right now, D O T does not have funding allocated for this project. In my conversations with D O T staff, the soonest that this project could potentially be constructed. Would be potentially twenty twenty-nine, but it's likely that would get pushed out further. So as you can kind of recall from the chart that Mr. Hobbie can show you, where earlier. We're going to be looking at some of the, potentially seeing some of those failing. Lovely service at some of those nearby intersections. So hopefully, we can get it programmed through the D O T in short order, relatively speaking, and get construction underway. Meantime, we still also have to construct all the connecting local roadways. Forty-seventh from Columbia Road all the way to Forty-eighth, and then Forty-eighth from Thirty-second all the way down to Forty-seventh. So we have a sizable amount of local roadways we have to construct as well.
Question.
So the C family bumped everything a quarter of a mile south? And I I wasn't following, why? Why would you bump that a quarter of a mile?
Sure. So at that highway minimum spacing is one mile, they. They have a desire to see it, so we wanted to look at providing that additional separation. And we know we couldn't go down to Sixty-second, because that wasn't the same level of benefits. And then the other fifty, the quarter miles kind of decided not to, because if we go any further, we still need to tie in at Forty-seventh, we got the Kingswalk Gulf first over there, there's really no other. East-west major roadways that we build to connect into, so. If we got any further south than that, then we start getting into geometry issues as well as just future development issues by having a road that is highly skewed. So want to look at that, particularly to satisfy. That highway, make sure that they saw that we did look at a full range of alternatives, it's part of the departmental process, we tried to address the their concerns about that spacing. That's really why we can't help with that.
If I can add this, well, that another reason why it didn't look further south was also because future interchange potentially at Merrickville Road. And wanting to make sure that we reserve as much space as possible, because if you move too far south, all of a sudden, you don't have further, you don't have enough space between. This proposed interchange and a future American interchange.
Just to pile on. The, I think it's a good alternative to have on there, because obviously, you know, federal highway and those federal agencies, they don't tell you ahead of time. Exactly what their their final decision plan is going to be. In this manner, in case they do have some concerns about spacing, we've already environmentally evaluated one that provides another shift, it gives that a little more spacing. Again, between the two interchanges, just in case they have some concerns. And quite frankly, the C one point one, you know, if from our perspective, is is really pretty much an acceptable alternative too. But I think that the choices we're making tonight align very, very, very closely with the with the D O Ts, we've got a really good consensus, I think, on both the. The location and and the intersection spacing, so we're really trying to build on that.
Can I enthusiastically move approval and just also state that all the gentlemen and ladies of the D O T are very fine individuals? That helps us. We have a motion in the second, further questions or comments?
Mr. Webber.
It's Mr. Weber.
Take it away.
Okay, um, I, I really appreciated the, all the work and the research and all that's been done on this. I think there's a couple of values to the project. Really, it opens up forty seventh avenue south with access to the interstate and some, and the future development. Which is important, but probably equally as important is its impact on the future redevelopment of thirty second avenue south, which we know. You know, is in really poor condition. I don't know if anybody can answer this question, but just the fact that this is in our future plans. Will there be any impact on the future? Redevelopment of thirty second avenue south if it can't wait as long as what this timeline seems to indicate for forty seventh interchange?
Wait. I don't. Think I can even realistically speculate too much on that one. We do need to reconstruct thirty second. It would be my hope that now that we have. I'm speculating again, assuming city and everybody makes the decision, move ahead with the interchange, right? Once that decision is made, it would be my hope that then we can. All decide that four lanes on thirty second moving into the future is going to be sufficient. Therefore, maybe we can start a reconstruction process on thirty second. Until we can resolve the number of lanes that you know, thirty second, there's no way we can even initiate a discussion review on the reconstruction itself. So that doesn't give you any specifics in that comment, but I think it, it moves the page forward one more step and, and for us to be able to at least take a running shot. At getting the reconstruction going.
That sounded like a question to me.
Yeah, yeah. More than I'd almost care to.
But a positive.
Yeah.
No, thank you, Al. I, I appreciate that because I think that makes sense that it would. There's, like I said, there's multiple values to this forty seventh project, so.
So we have a motion. Do we, we have a second. Anything further? Hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Which brings us to. And three point one indoor sports facility aquatic center and a Larry's Center capital plan and funding strategy update and feedback. Mr. Feeling.
Council Vice President Weber, I'm going to help lead this presentation. I've been working with Marine and Mike in finance. We have a consultant team that's on board, so we, and we also have our, our financial advisor from Baker Chili because. There's a lot of moving parts in this project and we've made some further advancements that we want to provide just some updates this evening. And importantly, get your feedback to make sure we're going the right direction on this particular project. So.
This is a huge project, the future equality of life in our community. Yes.
Next slides. Cheryl. So when we were last here and we had the joint meeting with the, the park board. This is just the benefit of the, of the information, if you recall, we were looking at almost eighty million dollars for an indoor sports facility. Located at itself of the Larry Center and twice a facility, which was a, a stretch pool, as they called it, at Choice Health and Fitness. We looked at the three quarter cent sales tax and then we had, we had a funding gap. And I think council president Sandy said at that meeting, well, how the heck are we going to pay for that? So we've been working on that. We've been working on how much additional borrowing that we could drive this particular project. And we've also been looking at. That construction cost and how we can narrow that down. So we have a viable project going forward. So that's really what we've been working on. On the last couple of months. Next slide. So the, the other thing that we wanted to do is that we said we would validate the numbers on that our, our, our national consultants provide to us. And so. We had two construction management companies in town that reviewed it in three architectural firms. And the good news is those cost estimates were relatively close. And so that's a positive that. On the project we have here, we're not going to be way under or way over and nobody wants to be that ever go out or vote. So generally, if we averaged all those out, it's, they came up with about five point eight million dollars more than what. That estimate was back in May. We don't, our team working with our financial advisors. Looked at that three quarter cents instead of having eighty million, it looks like we're in around ninety million dollars that we can bond. At thirty years at six percent interest. And so that was good news that we have more ability to bond. As we move forward, we're going to get, probably get into some technical discussions about, you know, how will we do it? Because we still have to have, we have the Larry set. Larry Center debt until twenty twenty nine. And so we have all the good financial people that can go over that. So. But we still have the funding gap of twenty four and a half million dollars. And so then we looked at some other alternatives. So next slide. Really no changes on the next thing, but we're really focused on looking at the Larry Center. Also want to notate on the Larry Center itself. People want to make sure that protect. Our, the other city owned asset being the Larry Center, of course, you know, of course, of course we are going to. But nothing's really changed with the Larry Center. We have the debt as I talked about through twenty nine, we got that we have to accomplish. We want to fully fund on their CIP and we've done that. So on average, it's three point seven five million dollars per year. We added a million and a half annually, just to give them some additional insurance on that. As part of that, we did inflict that two and a half percent as we move forward. So we, we really are trying to protect the Larry Center. Providing some contingencies on that because generally when we look at projects, the Larry Center, they've, they've in the end. Costs more than we anticipate. So we're putting some factor. Next slide. The other part we did is our finance department moved out to the bond council. What, what can we project? We were projecting when we looked at our sales tax that which, you know, this is part of the three course, what could be projected growth. We were. And the original May assumption was two percent growth and bond council has signed off that we can, we can assume three percent growth. So that's. Really great for Grand Force that we're growing faster. We've proven it. Over a significant period of time. So they allow us as part of our financial analysis to update, that's going to help us. To pay for a larger project as we move forward. I think the other thing we want to see, not only are we trying to protect the Larry Center at that three point seven five million dollars annually. But also looking at putting a million and a half aside for these new facilities. And so what we've heard. With government facilities is they're not maintained whether that's City Park. School. And so that million and a half is meant to set aside for larger term capital for these new facilities that I'm going to talk about. To really make sure that we can maintain these along the way, you know, certainly we want to maintain these facilities. Though that as, as we get into a vote that three point seven five plus the one point five. That would be fungible or we'd be able to work that in between. We certainly would want to dedicate some to the Larry Center. Facilities, but we certainly want to, want to handcuff city council in the future. It needs a role at the Larry Center that you can do that or at these facilities. So we would designate them, but we wouldn't like a handcuff on that you couldn't. Move it between these unprotected funds without city council actions, especially when you're going off thirty years. It's hard to see what the next thirty years is going to be. But next slide. So again, we're looking at new debt service. We have additional funds set aside for debt service that we've been looking at that went from that eighty million dollars on to ninety million. And so. Another look. We looked still at that thirty year sunset as we move forward, as we move forward. So next slide. So this is where we're looking at, looking at providing that aquatics and turf court facility under one roof. Looked at the area south of the Larry Center. We have a couple of concept drawings there to try to save some cost on the capital side. When we looked at integrating the aquatic center into Choice Health and Fitness, we determined about five million dollars in addition. Because of the renovations, you know, trying to integrate that facility in there. An additional five million dollars. So we looked at an opportunity of how we could. Build it more greenfield without having all those renovation costs. And that was one of the thoughts that we had moving forward. One of the things, and there's the, there's an appraisal on there, key things junior owns the land. City owns most of the land, South Larry Center, except for where the, the houses with some around there, that kind of that centerpiece. And so we did get a, about two years ago, we did get an appraisal on that property. In case there was some need to buy that, purchase that property. Right now it's valued at two point one million dollars. It's six point two acres. So what we, we've talked with Mr. Gags Junior, the mayor and I, and he is interested in selling. That property. He's interested in selling it for thankfully for that appraisal that was done a couple of years ago. And he's also interested in having it contingent on a successful sales tax. And I think when you look at the orientation of, of this facility, it makes sense now that we own that entire parcel. As part of that. We also looked at trying to combine these facilities. We have a range one hundred and six million, two hundred and fourteen million. And so. Even though we look like we can bond up to ninety million, we still have the gap. And so we looked at the aquatics, it's thirty six point eight. We're going to talk, we have some of the experts on here. We, we are proposing a. A fifteen meter pool, which is the desired size that you want. So if you want to do a pool the right way. Like West Fargo has or like Bismarck or what minus building, you want to build a fifteen meter pool because it serves your various needs. So that's what's in here. And the mayor's been. Really strident on if we're going to do things with size it appropriately, whether that's the pool or the turf, because you can't. Expand it once you kind of set that format, you can build other things around, but those two things have to be done right. We also looked at, really had their face to looking at a turf, but centering pickleball courts. And under phase three basketball, I've also kind of tiered priorities. We know the aquatic center is going to go away with the Islam coming down here. And right now you and he's targeting the first quarter of twenty twenty five. Also, I learned this that there are eight pickleball courts inside the Islam. So those are going to go away. And so really our primary motive is aquatics. To get a facility that is similar to what we have with Islam pool. To replace those eight courts that we're going to lose with Islam going down. And then obviously with the turf, we don't have that right now, other than. Kind of using the Pollard Center from time to time as we move forward. What we've heard from the park district and we're going to do some follow, follow up due diligence that basketball volleyball courts. There are courts, there's some concerns among users of whether they, how much they can pay to use those. So we've kind of put that in that third tier. Partly we're presenting this just before we walk to the group. So if, if we have it wrong with courts, you know. That they kind of know what, how we're prioritizing things and we need some further feedback next time we come back to. Next slide. We look at the operating cost. So right now, these are what we presented back in May. And the one thing that's a couple of things that have changed on the indoor sports facility, we don't have the courts or not in this particular area. We still have the turf pickleball and then the sprint track. We do also have the play area too, but the one thing we don't have in this operating. Estimate is the, the courts with the indoor aquatics that was going to be in the stretch twenty five meter pool attached to the. A choice Allison Fitness Center. Now we have a, a regular sized fifteen meter pool. Which presumably would cost more operating, hopefully would drive more revenue. But we're going to look at what that O N looks like right now. Right now that was an operating loss of four hundred and ninety two thousand. I had a discussion with Mr. George Ellier of the, of the executive director of Parks District Preliminary or like, or hasn't approved it. But they're looking at supporting up to five hundred thousand dollars subsidizing five hundred thousand dollars of, of the operations of that. That's where their, kind of their, their spot is. And as you recall, our twenty twenty four mill levy is two hundred and seventy seven thousand right now. So you know, that five hundred thousand or that four ninety two is. A little bit less than two mils. We also presented to you what a core scent restaurant lodging hospitality tax and that's six point thirty six thousand. Those are some options looking at O N as, as part of it and kind of what our colleagues or at the park district gets their pondering as far as we can. Excellent. So the fifty meter pool, we've asked the consultant, what's the additional cost versus that twenty five stretch? And the estimate is about seven point three million dollars in additional construction costs. Generally, what we've been told is Islam is a, is probably a fifty meter. A little bit less of a pool on the configuration, but generally when you go out there, it's, it's more of a fifty meter pool than it is a stretch twenty five pool. So trying to replace it with something equivalent. Again, we have the pickleball course and indoor sports. We have the indoor adventure park. And then the, the indoor turf that has this, this sprinting track. And that's when we talked about the Pollard Center. Right now we can't afford a, a track at this point in time. So we really going to have to rely upon the indoor Pollard Center as part of, for track facility for our community, whether it's high school. Regional high school and this sort of thing. And so that's the important, you know, really trying not to be redundant, but use all those existing. U and D facilities that we have. I think the other thing is mayor and I have talked about is this continued forty second street corridor and. And at the next call, you're going to talk about is similar to the interstate interchange. The, the underpass at forty second, I think it really can open up this corridor. And so if you look at the career impact academy in the north end of forty second with an underpass with the Larry's, the BMX track with this facility. If, if, if members here in twenty twenty eight is going to be a, a really different corridor and a very positive place. We really said. Opening up that entire vision in corridor as we move forward. Next slide. So we talked about what can, how can we save and maybe kind of mitigating the costs from all what I've heard from users is. And the mayor's really been supportive. Let's build the aquatic center to that fifty meter pool size. And that's a wise investment. We've talked about maybe not sunsetting that tax instead of thirty years to thirty five years would be an opportunity. We've also talked about right now, we want, we've always wanted to keep it within that three quarter cent. So we can always say that we're not raising sales tax or staying in there. But just for an example, if you raise it to one additional quarter cent to the one cent, that brings in additional thirty four million. And to be frank, the one percent, the extra quarter solves a lot of our challenges here. But. If, if you take a look at that, and then we talked already about the course and restaurant logic. The one thing we are working on is, you know, we have that funding gap where we can bond for ninety, but maybe this is a facility that maybe is between a hundred and a hundred and five or somewhere. We're about ten million or so. We still have not gone after to what we really want at least two large sponsors of, of these buildings. We have aquatic center and we have this indoor turf facility that we think are really going to be prime for sponsorship. So. That revenue was not built in here, whether that's revenue for the capital and or the operation in the name of that. I think we're going to have some fortune of that. So we'll continue to work on that and how we can narrow that down. But really, I think we wanted to bring. Both the private sector some examples that were pretty close. And with their help, we can, we can get across the finish line. And so that's what really what we've been working on. Next slide. So we're here today and really to get some feedback, we'd come back here. No later than August twenty eighth of the next table hall, we'd have some further defined concepts and input. And we would show you, we'd have Mr. Gossad develop some ballot language for your review. And then we'd also follow up with our bond council regarding the financing of this. We'd have further details. And I talked to Chair Lamark and Murray today. We talked about, you know, when could we get this on a November boat? And so we have the various dates. So if we need sixty days to get this on, so September fifth approval would lead us to a November fourteenth boat. A September eleventh special council new would get us November twenty first. And then finally. September eighteenth city council would get us November twenty eighth. So. Those are the three days we're targeting and we're really here to keep pushing it and see if we can get something that. USA council will accept and move forward with the voters. I just wanted to highlight too, as we, as you recall, we, we briefed this on in May with the joint meeting, is there was a lot of support. Users are supporting and the public is supporting the need for both an aquatics and an indoor turf type facility. They were very supportive, seventy percent plus of the sales tax continuing to the Larry's there's sales tax of. Providing new facilities at the same time maintaining the Larry's there at an appropriate measure for the next thirty years. So there is a lot of support. Not that that can't manage over time, but we don't get overcome. But there's a lot of support for moving this forward. And I think the other thing the mayor and I talked about is even if everything went really well today and we got the vote done. Likely those, these facilities may not be in place until twenty six or twenty seven. At the same time, we hope the underbaskets completed. At the same time, we hope the career intact academy. So whatever we do today and or in the near future, if it takes a little while, get that all completed. As we move forward. So that's kind of the urgency that to move forward yet this fall. Knowing that, you know, a few years from now, it's going to take a few years from now really to see these facilities. We think the other advantage of this tax is the mayor's really impressed us is that. Let's, if we're going to do a sales tax, let's try to do a sales tax which will expand the economy. Drive sales tax, drive our quality of life of our own people, but at the same time bring people to our community. And I think this, with the sales tax test, and what the Larry Center tax already does, so kind of really building up that. I think that's the last slide, Cheryl. So with that, we have a full team here to answer any of the particulars. Marine and Mike are here along with. Our financial advisor and we have our consultant team here too that can answer any of these particular questions. Really what we hear today, we bring. Really what we hear today, we bring back further details to you in a couple of weeks from now.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. President Sandy and I don't always agree on things, but I think he said it last week. Mayor, your your shift towards quality of life is it's inspirational. The community is going to benefit greatly from that. I'm particularly excited about fifty meter pool. That gives us an opportunity to host tournaments here, further driving revenue and just creating a resource that our community and a lot of others have. Questions or comments from committee members?
Maybe one more thing I can say.
Yes.
I think the aquatics, you know, certainly we reached out to the the high schools and they're interested, you know. They may try to make do with the central pool or in an interim period of time without making major, but they they're all in it. Well, we heard Chicago, they very appreciated that. We followed up with U N D and they won't commit anything, but we certainly want them to expand their swimming program too, but they're primed that. I think the other thing it expands recreational, you know, we we talked about these ninja courses and all this stuff. So it's we have to think of this. It's not like a pool that's attached to a high school where it's mainly, you know, schools centric or swimming team. This is really a pool for the entire community. You really have some fun and recreation. And though we know recreation is important too. The other thing we found is, you know, if you look at mine at Bismarck or or Fargo examples, a lot of times we have park districts and or school districts that are able to invest in aquatic centers or turf facilities. That's likely not the case in Grant Forks. So when we ask ourselves, why, why are we talking about this? Because I think without the city of Grant Forks moving this forward, these facilities aren't going to be able to get done in the shape and form that we really want to. So and I think it, and I I'm really thankful for the city council for even allowing us to go this direction because we certainly could have a city council that says, let's, you know, let's do what we do and not look outside of that. But without the city has to look more broadly and and you guys have really done that and even given us a chance.
And this is another year round, all ages destination for for the the region, not just for our community, for the driving revenue. Mr. Phelan. Is there a desired action right now? Are you seeking a approval or are we?
I think I think giving us a direction that we're on the right direction with the combined facility. And then what we're working on is finally some of the details. So really what I'm working on one direction from you is that we're going the right direction, something you'd rather see more. And then we'll come back with more of the particulars at the next call meeting.
Mr. Vin.
No, I I guess I'd just like to concur with, I think, the comments that have been made to date. I think this transition to quality of life, I think, is a great direction for the community and and the council to move forward with. A couple of different things it does, as has been stated, you know, it attracts and it retains a workforce. I believe there's there's a benefit there. I think it's also obviously great for the youth who will use a lot of this, but you've got pickleball courts. So it's it's really got a little bit of something for everything for everybody. And so I I like to see the direction it's going. One of my concerns has always been O and M. It seems like you've been able to look a lot at how you would how to operate it. And you and I like also the the idea that you've thrown out options for us to take a look at for how we would finance both the capital and the O and M that is going to be necessary. So it it seems like when you've done more of these presentations, you've gotten more data available to us that's been extremely helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Vin. Mr. Weigle, anything to add at this time?
Thank you, Chairperson Weber. I would just say I I'm excited for the opportunity to bring these facilities to Grand Forks. I think anytime we have the facilities to host some of these major tournaments, I think Grand Forks has shown that they'll go after them. And I just think it's a big win for our community.
Thanks. And this is one of those eight to eighty kind of developments, all ages year round. So it as far as no need for a motion, but you're looking for feedback in terms of questions, concerns, comments. Hearing none of those, we're basically being asked to give a thumbs up on that proposed agenda on the final slot. Is that correct, Mr. Phelan?
Yeah. So our ten would bring to plan to bring into that the next call meeting and then I'll have you vote something proceed to the following city council meeting, which I think September fifth, that would get you. But if you're not ready to do that at that, we are, what I'm saying, we have two backup dates in September that we can get to at the November vote. So we'll plan to bring you to the next call and then plan, we have three opportunities to in succession and bring you to a city council for the city council to move forward with a a vote with the assistance of Mr. Gostad.
Very good. Thank you, Father. Mr. Mayor, please.
Yeah, I think just make a few comments saying we've all been, you know, very fortunate to have the usage of the hislop for for many decades. I think, you know, we can be honest, universities have become big business now. I mean, that's just the the state of where they're at these days, that big business has decided to move on from the the courts and the pool. And we're looking at, you know, what facilities can replace them for the next fifty years. So I think it's pretty exciting, you know, to Mr. Phelan's point, it'd be great if the you know, the park district was fully taking this on, a university or other entities, but it's it hasn't happened. You know, you're going to be left without these facilities and the community of our size that would definitely put us in the negative column versus a lot of communities that are smaller than us. So I think I'm excited. I think as we look at it, it's it's going to be important for us to 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 work within the current three quarter cent sales tax. And then look at the timing of that. I just can't see appetite to to raising that if we can work at that with the current amount, I think it's it's what people are already paying. And also the funding, you know, when you're using a sales tax, the the people that come to use the events and stay in hotels, you know, they're contributing to that. And I think that's important because these are regional facilities. You know, if we live down in in the Minneapolis area, you know, communities don't have to get involved in these types of projects. You're going to have that, you know, somewhere in in the bigger cities. Us being the original draw that, you know, we draw from an hour drive, sometimes further away. I would say we've got the duty or the responsibility, but if we want to continue to be that hub, we need to be that original driver in amenities. This is just a piece to that puzzle. So those are my thoughts personally.
Thanks for your work on this, yeah, and your leadership, of course. Anything further? I'll I'll take all of that to be a green light for what we have presented to you, Mr. Phelan.
I'll see you back here in a couple of weeks with more highlights.
Very good. Thank you. With that, any further city council discussion matters you consider this evening? Looking for a motion to to adjourn. Motion for Zlonsky, second, Mr. Phelan, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meetings adjourned. Thanks.